Yeah. Okay, Susan, are you ready?
Okay. Keep going and go online.
Okay.
Go, go. Livestream to YouTube at your pleasure, at your convenience.
Okay. Sorry, we're late, folks. We got held up at the restaurant. But meal was good. So welcome, everybody. Live show. Let me start this from the first slide. Oh, can I do that? How it stops? Unfortunately, tonight Shelley Jackson can't be with us. But we hope she gets better real soon. Okay, why can't I see this?
Click on the slide. There you go. There you go.
Okay. Okay, first I would like to welcome all of the guests that are here new in the room as well as those who may be coming in the Zoom land as well as coming onto YouTube. We're just getting that set up now. And I'd like to have our end acknowledgement. Queen's University is situated on the territory of the Haji Masani and the Anishinaab Nation. And we respect the land that we meet on. So for announcement, we have a new member this month, Ieda Mishra. Hopefully I pronounced that right. And the Kingston Center has seventy-two members. Wednesday night are our social time. So if you'd like to get on the invite list, send us an email at the center chat list at Kingston at rush.ca. And we can send you the link. Queen's University is holding an open house, a daily open house on October fourteenth in regards to the partial solar eclipse. And at eleven AM, we are going to have a talk by Livia Kommo, who will talk to us about the midday midnight sun, the sky, sorry. And the times for the eclipse start at twelve oh three with the max at one fourteen. And it ends at two twenty-five. And this info is from Dayton Time Kingston dot com. We're looking for volunteers for the sidewalk for solar observing for the partial eclipse, weather permitting for observing. And but the talk is going to go ahead even if it is cloudy outside. And we're going to put some equipment together and have it set up inside the building if it's cloudy, just so that we can show people how to take pictures and what equipment was used to take these pictures. So next, we're going to have the update from National Council, John Hurley.
Hello, everyone. This will be a really short update. The National Council met in September. They, one of the matters they were talking about was having a national treasurer, since they didn't have one come forward at the last meeting and they've been asking centers to nominate people and a couple of volunteers came forward. But they were deemed not suitable. So the board has made the decision they're going to proceed the rest of the year unless something changes. And they get somebody, but they won't actively look for a treasurer. So in the meantime, our National Board and the Executive Director Jenna Heinz will be keeping a close eye on the finances. We do have a financial person in the office preparing things. So they seemed optimistic that this is going to work for now. The National Office is now at, I believe it's three full-time employees and one part-time employee. And things seem to be working well and finances are on track as well as expected to relatively small deficit this year compared to last year. The Board and National Council seem to be, the Board seems to be talking to National Council a little better than they were in previous years. National Council meeting is basically an hour or is a two-hour meeting and at least an hour or a little bit more of that is reports from our board, the National Board. So we're getting into this thing of it and they seem to be a little more consulting National Council on ideas and directions to go. So we're hopeful this will keep going. They'll be coming out with a new nationally-run Nova program. That is some of the old Soul timers might remember this. The centers used to operate this independently. New observers to visual astronomy. It's a multi-week course for basically beginners and intermediate people to introduce them to astronomy and what's out in the sky. National will be operating this online and will be able to sign up with them. I'm not sure on the dates on this yet. But some of the money will go to the National and some of it can come to the center. So hopefully we'll be promoting it. It's fall. Many of us time to renew your membership. So please go online to r a c dot C A into the secure site login and make sure your membership is renewed. Thank you very much. Any questions, feedback or anything, just let me know. And that's all for now.
Thank you, John. Okay. And I think I lost my. There it is. Okay, next up, we're going to have our guest speaker, Stefan Jack, who is from the Sarnia Center. They moved into the area and he'd been here for a couple of years. And he's going to be talking on building an observatory.
You have to do shadow puppets while we get your mark out. Well, first I'll apologize. My wife was supposed to be here. She was going to do a shortened version of the presentation she did at Starfest a year ago on her journey from a visual observer to an imager. But we had guests visiting over Thanksgiving weekend and she figures her brother made her sick and she was fine yesterday, but today she's not feeling so hot, stuffy and sore throat and things. So she decided probably wasn't a good idea for her to come. So you only get one of us today instead of both of us. I'm going to be talking about the building of our observatory. And just a little background, I'm not a builder. I'm not a construction guy. You know, it's not, not my thing. But we moved about a year and a half ago from Sarnia to a little bit north of Brockville. And one of the reasons we moved is we were looking for dark skies. I also do a lot of kayak fishing, so we want to be somewhere where there are lots of little lakes. And so we found a place a little bit north of Brockville and we ended up there. And so we had some space in the backyard and decided this, this will work. We can build an observatory there, which was kind of their retirement goal was to be somewhere where we could set up our own observatory.
And the drive's still not being recognized.
Well, it worked.
Are you from a Macintosh family?
It works in both. Because I use it on her PC.
Going to be a real short talk.
No, I've got one. I've got a spare key if we have to try and copy the cost. That looks like a PC.
Yeah.
It's probably not running Windows seven, though.
Windows XP there, Malcolm.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah. Don't laugh. I still have one of those running in the lab. No. It's not.
Yes, top runs on XP.
I, I also have it saved on here, so. As I checked to make sure it would work.
Now, let's try again.
Yeah, so we can copy it from there.
Sorry, folks. Normally we'd have all this stuff done, but again, late for dinner.
Okay. We'll entertain. Okay. We also have some solar viewers here tonight. So for those who didn't get any at the last meeting, we have the glasses as well as the square solar viewers. So if you would like some, let me know and come up at the break and we can get you some. And we also have the solar book that Rick borrowed last month. Total solar eclipse, April eighth, twenty twenty-four. If somebody wants to borrow it out from the library, just let me know. And I can put your name towards it and bring it back next month. Well, Elaine has already grabbed it. So there you go. Put you down. I know where you live.
That's a big PowerPoint.
So for those who are online, I know who's online.
Yep. We're not showing it right now because the most is disconnected.
That's okay. I saw Gary Diamond online. How's it going down there, Gary?
Rain, drizzle, fog.
Ah, well, you know, we got the same.
I brought a new piece of equipment, so on to blame this week.
Oh, okay. And I saw Don Town on there. How are you doing, Don?
Good. I'll step aside and just show the fallen stars background.
Yes, I seen that. That's a great picture. Kevin's just going to move a few screens here so we can see it. Okay. Who else is online here? Look at that great crew, eh?
Giant, big giant head.
Okay. Excellent.
New spotlight. Okay, we have an observatory. Let me.
Okay. I'm going to hand the mic back to Kevin.
And we're going to do that and slideshow mode, start.
There we go.
Mouse is yours.
All right, thank you.
I'm just going to turn the lights off so people can see better.
So this is the finished product, but I'll kind of go through our whole thought process and how we got to this point. So we decided we wanted to build an observatory. So the first thing we thought about was how big is this thing going to be? And I figured let's make it as big as we can make it. But I didn't want to get into dealing with building permits and all that. So nine by twelve is what we decided on because that's about your maximum size that you don't have to worry about getting building permits. I probably could have gone bigger. My neighbors probably wouldn't have worried about it one bit if I had gone bigger. But then the other thing is the bigger you go, the more wood and that the expense goes up as well. So we thought nine by twelve was a good way that we weren't going to run ourselves into any issues. So the first thing we did is I just took some, some rope and some poles and some tarps. And I kind of set up where I thought it should go and set up a nine by twelve and put the scopes in it that we thought that this is about what we'll be doing, just to see, is this even going to work? Is it practical? Does it make sense? So we did that and looking at it from a little higher perspective, seeing how it would fit within our yard and everything. I know a lot of people when they build their observatories, you know, they'll, they'll aim them north, south, whatever. We didn't worry about that. We were more worried about sort of the aesthetics and working with the yard. So we kind of said, here's a spot where we'll get our best sightlines and be able to, you know, not have it interfere with the rest of the yard. So that's kind of what we looked at and, you know, just we won't be spending a lot of time in it. We just wanted to kind of see, is there room for us to maneuver in it? And it seemed like yes, there was. So we thought, okay, this, this looks like this is going to work. So we So there, there are four telescopes that are in there, housed in there now. So the first step, like, like I say, I, I'm not, not a builder by trade or anything, so I don't have a whole lot of experience. What I did do, a friend of mine had purchased the CD on the Sky Shed Observatories. And so he lent me that just so I could have a look at it. And I kind of looked at their plans as to how they did it. I looked up some just shed builds online just to kind of get an idea. And then I just went ahead from there. So the first step was I marked out with rope, here's where it's going to sit. And I made the the, the ground piece. What did I go? I think I went twelve by fourteen because I wanted to make it a little bigger than what the shed was going to be, just to make it easier for cutting the lawn and that one, once it was all up and everything. So the first step was to dig out the ground. Now, being new to the place, we knew we had, didn't have a lot of soil to down to the bedrock. I was a little surprised that in some cases it was about six to eight inches, probably in the deepest corner. It was maybe twelve inches down to bedrock. So I started digging. And, and once I found the bedrock, I decided, you know what, I'm just going to clear it all right out to the bedrock. And we'll, we'll build it right on top of the bedrock. We decided not to go with piers. I know a lot of people like to do the pier thing. We had that talk last week about, you know, the issues with using piers. I have friends who they just image off their back decks and they seem to do fine. And when we go away, we, we, you know, just image with tripods on the ground. So we thought, I'm not going to go to the trouble of trying to put a pier into this. And we wanted our observatory, we weren't exactly sure how it was going to be used. So I didn't want to do something that was so permanent that we didn't have any flexibility. So we decided just to go this route instead. I wanted to have power, so I dug trench. We were lucky, right at the corner of the deck, there's a power box there for our hot tub. So I was able to tap into that. So I just came along to the edge of the patio and then out to where the observatory is, again, right down to the bedrock, put ethernet and power out there. And to cover it up, I put just some concrete, a little, little thing, layer of concrete over top of it to protect it. Or so that nothing would happen to the wiring in that. So then what I did is I got sonotubes and I built just the, the frame floor structure and looked at the positioning of the sonotubes. Once we got that position, we drilled some holes right into the bedrock, put some rebar into that. And, and then we filled the, the sonotubes with concrete. And so that gave me the foundation to build the, the frame on for the floor. And by, if you have questions anytime, just, just holler. And then I filled that in with gravel and just put some brick around it, try to make it look nice. We get a lot of water and with the bedrock, the way it is, our, our backyard in the spring is very, very wet, very mushy all the time. So I, I just wanted something. Part, part of the thing, I wanted the floor up off the ground because I wanted to be able to have airflow underneath because it's so damp on the ground. I didn't want to build right on the ground and, and have that dampness trap. I wanted to get it up a bit so that that wouldn't be an issue. So I built the main frame for the floor. And so I put, put it up, put deck blocks up on top of the sonotube. And then this was the, the frame structure for the floor. Now, the interesting thing is when you build something that's nine by twelve and you're working with four by eight sheets of plywood, it, you have to figure out how you're going to end up jerry-rigging this. What I ended up doing is you'll see along the two sides there. I came in six inches on each side so that there was my one foot out of my nine, so that an eight-foot sheet of plywood would fit across the floor here. And then of course, going twelve that way, I could fit, fit four sheets across that way. The idea being that once it was built, if I ever want to get at underneath it, I can just take the scopes out, take off, I can take off all four of the middle sheets of plywood and now I'm open to underneath it. Originally, my idea was that I was going to run the ethernet under the floor and the power under the floor and put outlets right in the floor underneath the scope and an outlet for the ethernet so that I not running wires across the floor. As the project went on, it kind of costs kept adding up and adding up. And then finally I got my, you know what, I'm not going to worry about that now. But if I want to do that at some point, it's not a hard thing to do because I can just pop those two or two sheets of plywood out and I can get access under there pretty easy if I want to do something like that. So that was kind of why the, the floor looks like that. And like you say, doing nine by twelve, you're kind of have to jerry-rig something. So I got three-quarter inch marine plywood for the floor and I painted it with the paint that you'd put on a cement or basement floor just to try to give it some toughness and, and kind of protect it from when we're in and out and everything. And then I, I built the walls. Thank goodness my wife isn't here because she'll tell you, she, she, you made it too tall and it, it was again, not being a builder, I wanted to try to build it as simple as possible. I didn't have like an overall at the beginning, here's exactly how it's going to look. Once I got the floor done, it was okay. Now how am I going to do walls? So then, then, you know, I worked on the walls and I just kept kind of finding, okay, how do I do the next stage of this as I went along? I probably could have gone about six inches shorter on the walls. But the tough part is her scope, she's got like a fairly wide field scope on a small mount where I've got the LX two hundred, which is a pretty big scope on a big mount. And so I'm trying to accommodate these different sizes. So she wants hers to be able to, to, you know, see the horizon better. So she's a little disappointed that it's a little taller than she might have liked. But I didn't want it to be too short and then, you know, worry about issues with the scopes getting hit with the roof sliding and everything. Yeah, sure. I'm just at Home Depot. Or sorry, not marine, pressure treated, sorry, pressured, the pressure treated plywood. Yeah, sorry. Thank you for. So yeah, just, and, and I mean, those sheets aren't cheap like it. I kind of had a rough idea of what I thought this was going to cost and it probably ended up costing almost double what I kind of originally thought it was going to cost. Of course, we were building it at, you know, the time that wood was pretty expensive and everything too, kind of before it all started to drop down. Maybe it has started to drop down a little bit. But it certainly wasn't a cheap move. Yep. I ended up going. I can't remember it was, I think it was five and a half feet. And then by the time you put, you'll see as I add being six feet. Part of it is nice because the door, like I don't have to duck it because you're stepping up and stepping down through the doorway. I don't have to really duck to go through the door. And you'll see when we get to the end, the, the scopes are kind of almost at that level. So then I had to put sonotubes out for the frame where the roof was going to, to roll off. So that was kind of the next step. And so then starting to, to do this part. So using four by four, so I had to use two four by four. So I, I, I put a shorter one here and then a longer one that, that came all the way out to the end and had, I think, a foot and a half or two feet overlap over the frame there. So it would be supported. And then of course, I'm closing it in. Just a couple angles of that. And then it sat, we, we started building in the fall. And I actually got it usable just before Christmas. We didn't side it until the spring. But the tieback was, was good around it. It kept it protected all winter. So that, that was kind of nice. And again, so putting the, the bracing up for the truss, for the roof to roll off. And then again, just sort of framing up a roof that I felt would work. I built a, just a one roof, roof truss. Seemed like it would be solid enough. Asked a couple of friends, said, what do you think that, you know, people that are, that do building? They said, yeah, that should hold no problem. So I ended up doing that. One of the things that I did that, that is different from pretty much all the observatories I've seen built like this is I put my wheels and track on the outside where most people put them on the inside. And I did that because it, it made it a little easier, I thought, for building. And it also just kept it outside, not inside your space where you're trying to build and have room. So I found that worked really well. So I used three-inch garage door track and I used thirteen brackets and wheels on each side. So it really spreads the weight out nicely. When it was done, I was able to roll it with one finger back and forth. I estimated about five hundred pounds on the roof. And of course, then when you get some snow on it, but I do, when we get snow, I do go clear the snow off of it. So it, you know, it really isn't a lot to, to push and move that way. So there you can see, so they were, they're about a foot apart. The, the wheels, but these, these are the heavier duty, the three-inch ones. So that's pretty solid. Again, I was surprised at how much the, the track is like just the track. It was a thousand dollars just for the track for that. They were fourteen-foot pieces and I needed twenty-six feet on each side. And so they were two hundred and fifty bucks each for, for the track pieces. So again, I didn't expect it was going to cost quite that much, but you get to that point and you're kind of stuck and so you, you go with it, right? Yeah. So you got to make sure it can work. So yeah, so I had the, the four by fours on top that, that attached. When I initially designed the roof, I designed it so that I would have a nice overhang. Like I've got almost a foot overhang on each side and I designed it so that it would be kind of covered at the end here and the gable end would be sort of flat back in here. Again, so there'd be a good overhang to prevent, you know, water and everything else from getting in. I wanted to make it as secure as I could. And I ended up having to change that plan afterwards and we'll see why in a second. So from the inside, again, you can see the structure of the roof. And then I just put the, the tin on the top. I put a vent on each end. And you can see on the end, there's the wall. So then I had to build. When you see an open picture. Oh, so at first I didn't want the roof to be able to move in the wind. So this is what I did, just a simple latch system. I had four of those, one in each corner so that I could latch the, the roof in place. And so initially I was just pushing it open and I had a rope that I could then pull it to close it again, which worked for us for, for the initial phases of this. So you can see here where, where I had this flat. So again, it was kind of offset in and would be protected from, from any rain or anything that was coming down. So that kind of got it to the point where we were ready to go. Okay, so this is, is this a video?
Video made out of strands that we don't have at the office.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's too bad. So this was, yeah, this was just a video of showing it rolling open and, and, and closed. Presentation. So you can see with the roof rolled off, at each end, there was a, a little bit that stuck up. Which I did that because it wasn't going to be in the way because you can see the trees behind. And on the other end, our neighbor has a street light, which they rent from Hydro, which is fricking annoying. And they have the street light aimed into their yard, which actually aims into our yard. And so I wanted to make sure the street light was blocked from shining into the observatory so it wouldn't interfere with the scopes. So that's why I made the ends just a little bit taller there. So you can see with my wife, these are my wife's scopes, a little, little, sitting a little bit lower. Now, what we have done is we've since got a pier for this. So we've raised that up about eight or 10 inches, which is, is helped get it up a little higher. And then this one, I've taken the, the deck blocks and then taken some four by four posts and leveled them off. And so we've raised this one up. So now, you know, these are sitting up a lot closer to the level of the, the roof so that she gets a better view. And so, so eventually what I ended up doing was I, I went from it being a push, I motorized it. And when I motorized it, I had to make some changes. So now you can see I've actually brought the gable end out to the pier instead of having it inset like that. So you can see I had to add an extension piece here because I wanted to make sure that it rolled the roof all the way off. And so the track that, that rolls it had to stick out a little bit. Initially, my plan was to use a garage door opener. And there are three types. You can get the belt, the chain, or there's a screw type where, where it's, it's got like a a threaded rod that it, that turns and, and moves it. And that's originally what I was going to do, but I couldn't find one anywhere. That's what the Sky Shed people do when they automate them. But I couldn't find one anywhere. So with a little more research, I, I found that a lot of people use a gate opener system. And so that's what I decided to go with is a gate opener system. And so the gate opener is mounted on the other end. And then this is the track that, that it pushes to push it out of the way. Now, I do have a video on that, but we may be a little stuck on that. So okay, so, so this is the way it's looking now. It's everything raised up a little higher. And so you can see, I mean, you know, our neighbors have trees and things. We have some trees and that this is actually, that's, that's looking south. So it'd be really nice if that tree fell down because it would open up the south. Because that's on my neighbor's yard, so I can't really do anything about that one. But you can see like my, the LX two hundred and I've mounted the solar scope on top. So I wanted to make sure that the roof was going to be high enough to clear it. I know you can make it park them so they do. I just don't want accidents to happen. So I, I thought, you know, a little bit of height. And with the way the trees are, that little bit of height. And with the way the trees are, that little bit of height really isn't interfering a whole lot with what we can see anyways. My wife will argue different. And so that's looking uh north is kind of off this way. Oh, uh, once, once I got it automated, I also purchased um a wifi system. Uh, that connects into the gate opener. So now I can actually use my phone from anywhere and I can open and close the roof. So if ever we. You know, set up imaging and went out somewhere, we go, oh no, freak rainstorm. I can actually close it from anywhere now if I really need to. And I put a little blink camera in it so that I can always look in it and see is the roof open or is it closed? Just to be sure that way as well. So this was a video that kind of does a three sixty. That's looking north. So we can see the North Star up, up, up there for aligning and everything. Um. But. Being as I can't play them.
Just try something.
Okay.
Double click on it. Let's not be an idiot. No, let's try the next one. No, no, I broke it. Nope, too far.
Yeah, so we can, well. Can we get on the internet here?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I, I do have the one video that I was going to show about the gate opener. It is on my YouTube.
Okay, go for it.
Okay.
Don't forget about us.
Yeah, well, I just have to find it first. Um, now can I get into my account on here? Okay, why am I, oh, the mouse is upside down. That's why it's moving away. Um, oh.
Once we get the video up, we'll stop and reshare.
Yeah, how? You know where I get into my account?
Is it, is it a private or is it a public YouTube?
Um, I can't remember what it is.
If you just search for yourself.
Okay.
Stefan and Carolyn. Ooh.
Yes, that's. Okay, it's not finding me.
How about if you had the word astronomy or observatory or, you know, anything else that you've tagged it with?
Genius, there we go.
So I'm just going to stop the share for a sec.
Okay. Last one.
We're going to reshare. Huh, the whole screen with that. Okay, and can we make that big? Okay, Susan, how does that look on Zoom? Okay.
Okay, hopefully the sound comes through.
Let's just get rid of these guys.
Okay, so there should be sound.
I'm not hearing sound. Hey, Zoom line people, are you hearing sound?
I kind of talked through it, I guess. Uh, so. This is a video I made for YouTube, um, for the uh observatory. Or for Facebook group that I'm part of about observatories. So I was just kind of explaining what I've done. So. Um, obviously you can see the, the track there. So this is the gate opener, the, the Topens. Uh, when I originally mounted it and tested it, I didn't have this great big six by six there. I just had blocks. And the, the gate opener is meant to be mounted in a different orientation. And uh, so what I had is I had built a little support coming out from the wall and it was mounted, turned sideways. And every time it clicked on and off, it gave such a big shake with the torque. That uh, the track, it would, would jump out of the gear and that. So I ended up having to. Put that big six by six up to give it enough strength and support. Uh, so that I could lag it in really securely. So it's, it's lagged down to the, the roof. So you can see here, this is the track that it runs across. So across the bottom of the roof, I just put some pressure treated wood. So that I had a nice level surface to mount the track on that the uh. Gate opener pushes on. One of the things I was concerned about is garage doors. Um, they're designed to be able to shift a little bit from side to side. And if it, if the roof shifted a bit from side to side, it, the track would come away from the gear. So I mounted a little wheel here so that if it tried to shift this way, uh, it wouldn't be able to do that. So the gear is there. And then the wheel is here so that, that prevents it from being able to move too much so that it, it. I, so it won't move far enough away to disengage the track from, from the gear. I can't remember what else I was saying in the video at that point. Um. So it's designed to, to move twenty two hundred pounds. So I figured I was fine as far as that goes. Uh, you know, it shouldn't have any trouble moving it. And it does move it quite nicely. And the, it was like three hundred and sixty bucks for the gate opener. So the, you know, it wasn't a, a really expensive thing. So this is what I had to modify. On, this is the top of the gate opener. And so what I'm pointing there, the, the. This pen, there was another one exactly opposite on this side. And because of the way I was using this, ideally, the way they, that this design when you're using this, the gate. The track would be running across this surface of the gear. Uh, but because of the way I mounted it, I needed it to run over that on the side. So I had to just take the grinder and I just ground off the, the other one so that it, it was out of the way. And then this is the sensor. Uh, there's a magnet here and then a magnet at the other end and that sensor picks up the magnets to tell it when to stop. And normally that's mounted underneath here. And so I had to mount it up uh on top here so that it, it would pick up the magnets where the way they were mounted on the roof. But one of the things I told you, I had extended that gable end out, which was really nice because now this is underneath the gable end there. So when it rains, like this doesn't get wet or anything at all. Uh, the other thing with this gate opener, this is a little latch. If you open, you take the key and open it up and turn that down. It actually uh disengages the gear system. So you can still move the roof manually if you need to. So, and the way it's mounted, that's easy. I can get at that just standing outside. To access it. Well, the, the gear turns and I guess it pulls it towards it. Yeah. Cause the roof is over, this is on the outside of, of the observatory. So it, when the, the gear engages, it's going to pull the roof over top of it. Okay. There you go. That, that's it. Yeah. Uh. Yeah, that's the, the speed that it, it runs at. And then once the uh magnet comes, soon as it, the magnet uh gets sensed, it, it stops. And then this was just, I was just showing how the wheel prevents the uh. Track from jumping over.
Yeah, single point of failure.
Oh, well, I haven't had any squirrels up there. So let's hope that. Yes, if you press the button and then when it opens so far, you just hit the button, it'll stop. And then when you press it again, it'll go back the opposite direction. So, and the idea is at some point, I'm hoping this winter to dive into Arduino programming and uh, I, I've seen that there's things out there. To do that. So eventually I will. I would like to get it so Nina can do it. So, and this is just showing the back deck. There we go. It opens. No, it's pretty quiet. Yeah, I have to open the, the slide like if, if the, the patio door is closed, I don't hear it go. And you can kind of see, so my tall scopes, you can see the top of them sticking out. This is before we raised Shelley. So you're not seeing them at that point. And you see that's before I finished siding it and everything. And there we go. Oh, so one thing I do have to tell you, if you're going to go this route, here's the one thing that we found out that, that we had to deal with. Um, when you go to polar align, you go in, you do your polar aligning. And then you walk out and the floor flexes just a little bit. And so you've got your polar aligning and, and we use sharp cap and it says it's excellent. And, and then you walk out and then you look at it, you go, wait, it's gone back to good or fair. So one of the tricks that, that we've had to do is you go in and you polar align it. And then you walk out and you see how much you have to move it. And you have to actually make it not be excellent while you're standing there. But then when you walk out and the floor flexes back. Uh, you get it to be excellent. So you just, you just have to a, adjust how you do your polar alignment routine to, to get it because it. I was, I didn't even think of that ahead of time. We just happened to notice that one time when the polar aligned, but we hadn't shut. Sharp cap off before we walked out and went back and went to the computer. Wait a minute, it was just saying excellent. Now it's saying fair. What's, what's going on? Then we realized. I guess even though, you know, you use uh two by eights, the floor still has a little bit of flex enough that it, that it affects that. So. Okay. Oh, so I think the all in cost was probably around eight thousand dollars. Like it, I was expecting it to be about five. And it, everything like just, you know, the siding was almost a thousand dollars. The plywood for the floor, each sheet was like a hundred and twenty dollars or something, you know, and I needed what it was for them. Um, just everything, you know, it's this and then there's always something else you're buying, but. You know, I figured, get it done, be happy with it and hopefully it's going to be good now for us for as long as we need it. No, I sorted that off of Amazon. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Sorry for the technical difficulties.
This gives us one more idea. I really like that roof.
Yo.
What's that?
The videos are embedded inside of.
We're gonna have Andrew. Andrew stuff.
Um, I do not have it. It is, you have one right there. So let me take mine. Okay, right in there. And we'll give you the mouse.
As a matter of our pointer, you have preferences.
Uh, we have LibreOffice only. Microsoft Office costs too much.
Okay, that's a very good one. It's a slideshow duty.
Uh, F five to start that, but I've got to share it first. So let's just quickly pop back to.
Sorry. I have my button too fast ago.
Yeah. So let's go down to. Zoom, 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 zoom. Share and let's share the whole screen. And then if you go back to slideshow.
I can just.
F five should work. Yeah.
There you go.
It's thinking. Nope. If you're. There you.
So.
There's your mouse.
Is it break? All right.
Hopefully.
It'll be fine. We'll figure that. So, all right. Hi, everybody. You know, some of the others who don't know me, I'm Andrew Godfrey. I'm the editor of Regulus for the club. I'm also relatively new member. I just actually realized while I was sitting there that I joined this, like my first meeting in October twenty nineteen is when I actually came to the very first meeting in the Kingston Center. So I think I got like two meetings in before COVID hit us. And then I was like stuck at home for three years and everybody else. So, so you realize time is my path. Uh, those of you who don't know me already, like my background is in space and engineering primarily, and that's sort of what I do most of the time. And that, so I was, you know, always interested in astronomy as a kid, of course. And then I kind of got back into the hobby about five years ago or so. So uh, you know, Kim and Kevin had asked about it, talk a little bit about observing programs because I'm like relatively new members as well. And a junior member in terms of knowledge and experience when it comes to amateur astronomy. So. We thought we'd like to maybe try to give a little bit of a presentation for like, you know, the new members in the club that don't have a lot of experience. And don't really necessarily know sometimes where to get started. So. And I'm one of those typical folks, you know, like I've got young kids at home and I work uh long hours and basically I get weekends to do observing and. The weather this year has been junk. So, you know, I, I think I've had, I've only a handful of observing, you know, weekends I've been able to get out. That type of thing. So, you know, I've got all the usual typical problems that somebody that's just starting in the hobby tends to have. And of course you try to find that time and figure out how to maximize your time and sort of maximize your learning as you, as you get into a hobby more. So. Um, some of you may be familiar that a lot of astronomy clubs will offer what they call observing programs. And. I really like observing programs because what I find is that it really serves two purposes. One, it just gives you actually a goal, right? Sometimes I have a lot of friends that are interested in astronomy and they could want to get in the hobby, you know, but they go like, where do I start? Like, what do I look at? Like, you know, what, how do I? What's the point? You know, all those kind of questions. But I find that so it's almost having a, having an observing program actually is a really easy way. Kind of give them a bit of focus and sort of just get them started down the path. I mean, the secondary knock on effect is that it's like a big rabbit hole, right? You pick one of these programs. And you think you're just going to go look at stuff and check out boxes on the list, but then you start to, you know, do all the digging deeper and you start to go down those interests that you have. The next thing you know, you're, you've got party tricks because you can point at creators and those names of like, things like that.
I'm on the second. No, you're not.
I'm not my friend.
All right. Thank you, Jack.
Excellent.
Stick that in here. Yeah, there we go. Is that better? Got it now? Good? Da, 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 yeah. Okay, awesome. Okay, sir. There we go. So let's carry on. Um, so yeah, so I mean, there are a lot of clubs that have observing programs like uh the astronomy. Astronomical League has a massively huge observing uh program. They have dozens and dozens of different programs that cover a whole range of interests. And obviously the R A C's got a observing program as well, but they only have about half a dozen or so, maybe seven or so different programs. And they're kind of just sort of very basic. There's some really beginner programs, intermediate ones, and then a couple of advanced ones. Uh, for those who've been down the track. And I know a lot of members here in the club and people in the room have done these programs and have, have looked at them, but I'll just go through. This one a little bit detailed, just because I know that some people have not seen these before. So I'll just go next slide here. Real quick. So I, I like most people, you know, I started with the R A C, uh, simple beginner programs. I did the explore the universe and explore the moon ones, which is sort of, just sort of situated me. To some geography I didn't have before. And then of course, I got interested in the moon because it's a very simple target, especially if you live like in an urban area where I do, where you've got mortal sky conditions that are not great. And like I said, you have restricted observing periods that you can actually get out and look at things. And so the moon is in the sky most of the month. And so what I found that I was doing is that I'm usually running two observing programs at a time. Like I'm doing this program, but I'm also doing the double star program. As well. So because then if I get, you know, if I've got good skies or, or moonless nights, then I can at least always have something to plan and something to, to work on as I sort of march my way through my. My own sort of journey on exploration and gaining knowledge of, of the subjects. And so. Uh, this program I found was really interesting because I mean, you know, it is our closest neighbor and a lot of times it gets like by serious amateur astronomers, they tend to sort of write it off. As a, as a subject, they want to get into the deep sky objects and look at the more complicated things. But, but it's an amazing conversation starter for folks that don't do astronomy all the time or amateur astronomy on a regular basis. And it's a relatively easy target to get at. And, and also too, once you start to dig into it, you do actually realize that if, if you're interested in geology or you're interested in. You know, it's what they call cellenography, right? Like lunar geography. It's quite fascinating actually, when you think about how this thing got here in the first place. And of course, what creates all of these sort of features that we see and we kind of just take for granted and sort of don't get much of a, of a passing thought to. So. So the Isabel, Lunar Observing Program is what they call an intermediate program because it, it's a program that will take you a long. Time to, to get through and accomplish. It's not something you'll do just in a couple of months and that because there's quite a few objects that they want you to do. So like I said, it's one of the two programs that are there. And also to encourage, I found at least the development skills, like I'm not an astrophotographer yet. I'd like to get there. Uh, but obviously I feel like I have steps. Like I, you know, I started with binoculars and I graduated to a telescope and then eventually going to get into the more detailed stuff. But I find that. These programs really provide that opportunity to sort of test some of the skill sets that maybe you don't have. Like one of the other things that I've started to do is lunar sketching, which is actually really, I find very. Interesting and very, very relaxing. Actually, I find it's catharsis for me. But uh, it's something I've never really tried before, but it's something that I'm kind of actually kind of like I said, it's a rabbit hole. I'm starting to sort of tumble down it and, and get into it more. So. So sometimes with these observing programs will force you out of your comfort zone or things that you're just sort of very familiar with it doing. So I find that. And especially for newer members and they're newer to the hobby or newer to the clubs, it's a great segue for them to go to get into the more complex and, and more complicated observing. So. So I highly recommend them if, you know, uh, for those, even for the more veterans. So. So the program is, is pretty uh simply structured. There's obviously a lot of required objectives that you have to observe. And record in order to meet the certificate requirements. And then they have something they call challenge observations. And these are usually things that are in, in the same region. That you're looking at, but they may be more finer detail uh features, craters that are smaller, uh basins, mare, you know, whatever hills, whatever it may be. And so what they've done is that if you take a, um, this is just an example of one of the pages that's in the, in the logbook and the checklist. And as you can see, they have. And as you can see, they have basically the requirement of the region, they've got some, uh, some, uh, latitude launch and various locations for you. Um, they give you some very basic information. Like, one thing I always find very interesting when I'm looking at lunar features is that. I take for granted just how big some of these things are. Like, you're looking at a crater and you don't realize that it's, you know, two, three hundred kilometers across potentially. Or it's fifty kilometers deep or whatever the case may be. You think it is as a small object, but then, you know, when you start to get into some of that detail and how it was formed and. And what some of the depths and ranges are, it's actually, it gives you pause, especially when you compare it to like, you know, like futures on earth. So you've got those required, uh, uh, sort of observations you have to make, but then there's also challenge ones that sort of take you down a little bit farther down the rabbit hole, if you will. And so you sort of go through this process and, and over time, basically, they've got basically about, you know, like it says, a hundred and sixty. Observatory observations and then there's some challenge ones in there. And then if you're, uh, you know, if you, if you take advantage of libration as the moon goes across the sky, you can get some of those as well. Uh, which are very, you know, much more challenging depending on the scopes you're using. And then, of course, they have this really one, which is like if you're like what they call a lunatic. Uh, and if you want to go after the full thing, there's a spreadsheet that's provided with the program that actually has a thousand, uh, named features on it. And if you really want to go to town, you can, you can slowly march your way down this list. I, I am kind of going down this list by default, but. I'm not going to declare that I'm going to get through all of it yet. So, but you know, it's good to have a challenge, right? It's something that give you some focus and, and sort of go on it. So. So where am I? So, like I said, I did explore the moon, so I didn't want to cheat and sort of say, well, I've already seen that, I can knock that one off. So I actually started over again. So to speak, and I've only been going on since May, and like I said, with the few sessions that I've had, I haven't really chewed in, as you can see. But the one thing that's interesting is that, you know, you get into some of the things where you start to find things that actually aren't in the list. But you find it in the maps when you're using your references. So like, for example, like Bancroft Crater, which is next to Archimedes, is actually not in the list of. Objects to find. It might be in the lunatic list, but it's actually not in the required list, which I find interesting because. I have a picture here, I'll show you that I, that I took. You can actually see it quite easily as part of the observation. So I, I was kind of interested to us the why that didn't get. On the list, I guess, maybe just got overlooked perhaps. So you find little things like that. Like I said, it causes you to do things that you don't normally do. Like, I mean, I'm doing quick and dirty sketches there just so I can make my records, but. You know, at the same time too, you start to get into taking your time and and doing some proper artistic sketches with, you know, white pencils and black and all that kind of stuff. And then, of course, this is like the real dangerous piece, right? I'm slowly getting dragged into this photography, which will be a very happy but expensive endeavor. Uh, when I get to it. So, but it's good because it allows me to practice and sort of break my teeth on the, on the whole topic and start to ask the questions or think about the things I need to know. So that when eventually I get to astrophotography, uh, more seriously, then I'll be better prepared than just sort of showing up lining and buying a lot of stuff I don't need. So, you know, you go through your normal sort of records, you make your sketches and you make your little notes and so forth and so on. And like I said, when you're done the whole thing. Actually, you end up with a pretty good reference, which I think is, is pretty good. So, so let's just talk very quickly about imagery. So, I'm doing like, you don't have to take photos for any of the observing programs. It's not a requirement, but, uh, um, you know. I do this one for reference too, because sometimes you'll see things, you're not quite sure, and you want to check later when you go back inside and do your notes and finish up your logs. So, I sometimes like to have a photograph. I'm using a very simple aperture. I basically have an iPhone mount connected to the eyepiece now. And this is taken with an iPhone fourteen, uh, basic lens. And so, I mean, it's not bad, right? And this is real, just quick and dirty, like it's not stacked or anything or photoshopped. It's just a single, you know, sort of hit and switch. But already you can see you got, you know, there's Play-Doh and there's the Appenon Valley there and sort of thing. And there's Archimedes that I was talking about. There's Bancroft Crater right there. That, uh, nobody notices. And then you've got like Fui and Beer and then Heinrich and then Lambert down here. And so for the Cassini right there, you know, certain things. And so before you know it, like, like now you're, now you're fun at parties because who else can do that? But, and then of course you catch things too, like so for example, there's like a lava flow at the bottom of this valley, right? Which is there, which is really, really hard to see. And I, and I couldn't believe it, I actually caught it in the photo. If you look at this thing real close, you can actually see the dark grill that runs at the bottom of the valley, which is the lava flow that's pushed up through and has caused part of that fissure. But I mean, I thought I saw it with my naked eye when I was doing the observing, so I made a note, go back, look again, you know, that kind of thing. But of course, when I looked at my photos later, it's like, oh yeah, I can actually see it. It's just right there along with the shadow. So, you know, lots of interesting features. You start to learn about, you know, the geography, the Tenerife ridges that are there. You've got the caucasus and the apennines as you go farther down, like, you know, you can see Hadley Grill and the Apollo fifteen landing sites and all that kind of stuff and. And all that. And then, of course, you know, we're going back to the moon next year, you know, if all the engineering goes well enough, they're going to send four people around the moon. And so you start to, like, me personally, like, I'm starting to reconnect with all this just because it's starting to become a bigger knowledge. And of course, as. Those stories get out amongst my circles of friends and, and clubs, people start asking more questions. Tell people stuff and it's, it's everyone's interested and it's good. So, so it's a, so, you know, it's a great, it's a great program from that regard. And then, of course, too, like I said, the technology with a phone, you don't need fancy equipment, right? You can, you can get pretty sophisticated or decent shots for reference, just with whatever you've got it. At hand, literally. So, so good, good photos and good references all the way around. So, you know, what have I learned so far? So, you know, like all programs, right? You try to sort of pick up a few things. This program is, is not really so, like, it's not a beginner program, so you do kind of need. I would suggest at the very minimum, you're going to look at it like a six inch telescope to get sort of real return for your investment out of it. Eight inch scopes are great. Uh, it's what I'm using right now. I've got an eight inch Schmitt Casagrand, uh, that I'm using. Like I said, I took this picture with my iPhone. Like, you know, so great shot, there's Tyco, you know, you can go on the mare, like it's a, you can get pretty decent shots for reference and just for learning and getting your cellenography sorted out. The program has got a main reference, which is Anthony and Ruckles, uh, Moon Atlas. It went out of print some years ago, but actually they've just republished it. So it's actually just come back into print last year. Um, like I know that, like, so you and I were talking to this, like, I bought a copy, I want to say it was eighty dollars, I think is what the cost is, but. The maps in here are fantastic. If you haven't seen this reference and, and of course, like I said, there are references throughout the program for it, so I'd highly recommend it. I have one other one that I use quite often. Uh, this is Charles Woods' Atlas of the Moon, uh, which is also a good one. I'm sorry if the guys on books online probably can't see it so easily. This one's great because it just has like some really nice sort of lots of really good, simple maps and very good sort of references. So, I like having a couple of hard copy. I have a couple of apps on my phone too, which give me good online lunar maps that I can sort of, you know, sort of refer very quickly. But I find that those are pretty useful. Um, the other thing too, like, like all these programs, right? You think you're just going to start on page one and you're just going to work your way through it. So, of course, you know, I started in the middle like most people do for most projects. And you sort of went, I went out on the first night and I was like, okay, what phases the moon in? I guess that's where I'm starting. And you sort of go from there, so you have to accept that. I broke it up into sections, like I showed with that picture, and I just took my time. Like, uh, you know, it's not really, it's not a program you can finish quickly. So you really just want to take your time and, and it actually allows you to sort of get into the geography and the evolution of that section of the moon and. And you sort of learn quite a bit. So I find that it's not something you want to rush and, and it's actually a pretty interesting view. And it's something that I find. The moon is one of those objects, it's really easy to share with other people that don't know a lot about astronomy and just want to see something cool. So I have a lot of other of my, my neighbors and my, and family and friends wrap my scope a lot, just have a look when I'm out doing whatever I'm doing. So it's just great because then you get other people interested in the hobby. Um, like I said, I use a cellphone to take most of my quick reference shots for later use. That's pretty quick. Um, libration, obviously you want to take advantage of it when you have it because like this summer with the weather being junky as it is, like I missed a couple of opportunities. And I've been waiting like seven months to get back to that point, try to have a clear night with that libration, you know, that phase of the moon. That kind of thing, so I could get the rest of my shots. So, so I try to take advantage of those opportunities as they come by. And then the last thing, like I said, is. I find that if you, you know, make a bit of investment in your log and however you decide you want to keep it, but I find that once you've completed this program, like you'll have a pretty handy reference. That you can use for other things and maybe start some other projects, depending what those are, or things you want to go back and revisit. So like, I'm sure that prove my photography skills and get up to a higher level in that regard. I'll probably go back and take some pretty detailed shots. I mean, like I saw some of those shots that Shelley put up on the Facebook page, and the moon, those are fantastic, right? So those are the kind of things I'd like to do eventually. So, of course, I'm just sort of getting my, like I said, breaking my teeth on the basics, but hopefully I'll get to that, to that point, at some point in the future. Where you can take much more detailed photography and I already kind of know the subjects that I'd like to go back and look at first and, and photograph and sketch first, so. So that's it, that's a kind of a nutshell. And this is just one, this is just one program. So, a lot of the more intermediate and advanced observing programs are actually quite fascinating. Like I said, I find the other one that I'm working on, the double star program is the same thing, that, you know, you learn about the way that the stars separated, the angles and all that kind of business colors. You know, and then you start to learn about, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, so for, for newer amateur astronomers and people that are newer to the hobby. These are actually pretty useful tools. And so I would go back to the R A C and say, this is a good thing and it should probably make more, uh, as they're able to. Because I find that it's a great gateway for, for newer amateur astronomers coming into the clubs and coming into the hobbies. So I would highly recommend them. If you've got friends that are not sure about getting into the hobby, this is probably a good place for them to start. So, that's it. Thanks, thanks very much. Very short, sweet. And that, and any questions you got? So, thanks.
Could I ask a question?
Oh yes, please.
Um, this is Bruce.
Yeah, I see you.
Okay, sure. Uh, anyway, um, so I was just wondering, how do you connect your cellphone to the telescope eyepiece?
So there's, there's two ways that a lot of the Celestron products are, are doing it now. Uh, there's one series of telescopes, like their StarSense scopes, and they're quite literally. Uh, they actually have a mount that's in the scope practically, and you just drop your phone right into like a cradle and it's connected through wifi and it goes right away. And then the way that I'm doing it is I've bought a really simplified, Celestron makes actually a cellphone mount. That you can connect to the eyepiece, uh, of your telescope. And again, it's like a cradle and it has an X, Y, and Z axis actually on it. So you can actually. Uh, once you get the phone in the cradle, you just basically orient your eyepiece with your camera over the eyepiece until the image comes through actually on the screen of your phone. And then you're good to go. And then you just hit the button and, and away you go. And, and, and most of the phones now, the cameras in them are actually getting increasingly sophisticated. So you can, you can create longer exposures, you can create, uh, you can, you can basically do some post-processing right in your phone. So it provides you a great, a great source. And it's a very simple connection. It takes like two minutes to set up. Uh, and then because of the way that the cradle's designed, I, if I just want to put my eye back on the eyepiece, I can pop the phone out like, like that. It takes like no time at all. And then I can look through and do what I want to do. And then if I want to get a photo or I can put my phone back in the cradle and take a couple of shots, so. So it's actually pretty, I, I recommend it for like beginners because it's not technically complicated. And it's not actually very expensive. I think the cradle cost me like forty bucks. And of course, everyone's got a phone, so whatever phone you have should, should do the trick.
Right, okay, thanks a lot, that's very encouraging.
Oh, thanks for the question.
Okay, I think we're gonna take a five minute break now, so, uh, we shall see you shortly.
I'm not gonna start all over, I guess.
There, now you have a bigger picture.
Oh, okay. So where was I? Uh, yes, M. M thirty-four, um, so when, when I'm shooting deep sky objects and stuff, if there's a, a gap between my main targets. Uh, then I just try and pick out a, an open cluster or two, and I just do one hour with the color camera. And, uh, and actually they're, they're all coming out pretty nice and they're getting down to like eighteenth, nineteenth magnitude. And, uh, I find one of the issues I have with the Hankscope is there's a fair amount of scattered light. But actually it tends to show the star colors off very nicely on the brighter stars. So, I'm enjoying that. So, big events this month. Um, well, we're going to be cooperating with Queens for these clouded out solar eclipse on Saturday. Partial solar eclipse. Um, normally I would have events in here from the Queens Physics and Astronomy Department. But they seem to be getting a little lax with their scheduling, so things are only showing up sort of a few days or a week. In, in advance of an event actually happening. So I did go to see Jim Teebles, uh, last month. Talk on cosmology and, uh, he was generous enough to give away two autographed copies of his latest book. Which I was lucky enough to win. So, I'm busy reading that as, uh, as we go. Uh, ADSO webinars, uh, there's going to be, uh, an extra one at the end of this month. Because, uh, you know, the first weekend in November, when they normally have it, is their annual meeting in Boston. Uh, including an AstroPi workshop, if you're, uh, getting into Python and, and doing astronomical computer, computing. Um, and I think that's actually what the webinar was on last Saturday on the seventh. So you can go back and listen to that. It should be back, should be up on their YouTube channel shortly. But anyway, so they've moved the how to a week earlier on how to DIY your own astronomy equipment. So I think there's going to be like a couple of people talking about, uh, building your own stuff. L and I, L and A Deep Sky Viewing Area. Um, there's, uh, the last two events for the year, they stop at the end of October. Uh, astrophotographers assemble, uh. Well, that was last weekend. There you go. So, one more event this coming weekend, Laser Guided Star Tour. And I'm not putting stuff up for the North Frontak because theirs is only available on Facebook and I don't have Facebook. October Hours of Darkness, it is starting to get dark. We are now past the equinox. So you can see we're up to over ten hours of actual astronomical darkness. Uh, the sun's getting low, down to like the low thirties by the end of the month altitude. So not very good for astronomical imaging. Events in the sky, uh, starting about now, um. No, Gagen Shine, you can see before midnight or around midnight. Uh, extremely faint, the, the fall and the, and the spring are the times to see this because the, the Milky Way is not involved. The Gagen Shine is so faint that the Milky Way completely washes it out. So you have to see it, uh, in the spring and the fall. When, when the Milky Way is kind of on the sides. Thirteenth of October, very thin crescent moon, just thirty-one hours from noon. Uh, in the morning sky on the fourteenth of October. Not coincidentally, the same day as new moon, a partial solar eclipse. On the twentieth of October, two, uh, moon shadows on the disc. Uh, sort of in the evening, nice, uh, nice, easy time to see it. Uh, twenty-second of October is the peak of the Orionids. And it's, you can see it's right next to the first quarter moon. You think, oh, the moon's going to interfere, but actually the moon sets. Before Orion rises, so the moon is basically out of the picture for the whole thing. Um, Venus at greatest elongation west in the dawn sky, so at that point it's starting to turn around. Heading back down towards the sun and then, uh, full moon on the twenty-eighth. Uh, for early November up to our next meeting, uh, Jupiter is opposition on the third of November. Getting up like sixty-one degrees, uh, elevation, um, when it transits. Uh, last quarter moon on the fifth, also on the fifth, the south torrid meteor shower peaks. Very minor shower, like five meteors per hour xenophyl, xenophil hourly rate. And on the fifth of November, daylight saving time ends. Hooray, hooray. No, I'm, eventually it's going to be here permanently. Uh, the ninth of November, this is actually after our next meeting, but close after our next meeting. Uh, the moon rises, uh, less than half a degree from Venus in the morning sky. It's going to be a spectacular view. It's, uh, thinish crescent. So you'll get nice earth shine, Venus, and, uh, Venus is like less than a lunar diameter. From the moon. And this is a long ways out and this is using my solarium, so I'm not sure this is accurate. But it looks like there's a satellite goes right by like within a few arc minutes. Of Venus and the moon. Unfortunately, it's four point six magnitude, so it's pretty faint. The major planets, Mars is really now too close to the sun to see. Uh, Saturn is well up in the southeast by the end of twilight and try and transits mid-evening. It's very low in the sky, so you'll want to try and image it or look at it, uh, while it's, uh, as high as possible. Neptune rises mid-evening, transits just before midnight. Jupiter, as it comes up to opposition, is, uh, rising just after dark. And transits at about two o'clock in the morning. Uranus is, uh, something like eight degrees, I can't remember exactly. Eight or nine degrees, uh, behind Jupiter and, uh, so transits just a little bit. Later and slightly higher in the sky than Jupiter. So again, a good time to see it. It's five point six magnitude, so it's not actually difficult naked eye. We looked at it at fallen stars. So it's a good chance to get out and, and see it naked eye if you haven't done that. Venus at magnitude minus four point six, no problem seeing that. It's, uh, already twenty-five degrees above the horizon at the start of astronomical twilight. So that's, you know, the sky is still dark and you've got a minus four point six object there. And Mercury is, uh, on the opposite side of the sun from Mars, but also two. And Mercury is, uh, on the opposite side of the sun from Mars, but also too close to actually look at. Uh, small bodies, uh, nothing's happening this month. But on the third, uh, we have twenty-one Lutetia opposition and on the fifth of November, eighteen Melipomene. Is in opposition, good chance to, uh, image those guys or look at them with a telescope. You can look at things with a telescope. Any questions? Yeah. So you don't have to repeat the question. Um, small planets at opposition. They're generally the brightest and, and the highest and, well, anyway. To positively identify them, you normally take pictures a day before, a day after, that kind of thing. How much, they're not moving very much at opposition. They're moving the least amount of relative. No, they, they, they do the standard op- um, retrograde motion. So, so they're moving eastward in the sky and then they will become stationary. That's when they're, they're slowest. And then they start heading back in retrograde motion. And so at opposition, I think they're, you know, roughly their fastest motion backwards. Then they will become stationary again and then move off again. It, the retrograde motion is slower than prograde. But it's still moving in, in a, you know, a couple of hours with, you know, with imaging. Okay, so overall, it's still a good time to do it. Yes. Split apart time to identify them rather than it's the worst. And if you're doing visually, you know, you're the, just look at it the next, well, the next clear night. Changed fields of view. Anything else? No. Thank you. Well, just a couple of people leaving. I thought you had photos to show.
Thank you, Rick. It was great.
During the roundabout, okay.
Okay. No, that's not what we want. No, I wanna see the people. Okay, well, okay, and next up, we're gonna have our observing. Uh, report, so we'll start online. And the first person I see. Is Susan G. Yes, you're impressive. Put your own line. Go ahead, Susan.
And, um. Yeah, so the observatory is all back together and the telescope is functioning and I've been, um. Observing, uh. Everything okay? Okay. And, uh, just getting back into the saddle. It's been really wonderful. That's all.
Okay.
I'm just gonna turn the lights back on.
So when we pass around the microphone, do you wanna talk into it because? Okay, we'll do online first, okay. Uh, John, early.
Oh, not too much observing lately. Been renovating the office and. Too much rain, too many clouds the last couple of weeks. That, uh, warmth batch was, uh, really nice though, got some solar in. Not too much else.
How goes the observatory floor? The garage floor?
That should be starting in the next week or so. Maybe two weeks. We got plans and permits are done. And money has been exchanging hands with drawings and the township, so we're getting close.
Well, that's good. That's good. Okay, thanks, John. Don, town.
Uh, really not too much, uh, from, uh, my perspective since Fallen Stars, uh, I've had a construction project going on rebuilding our back deck, so. Uh, have not had a lot of time to look at the night sky.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce. Oh, you're muted. Unmute. Nope, still muted. Okay, Bruce, we'll come back to you in a minute. Tessa. How are you?
Pretty good, thank you. Uh, no observing, nothing at all.
Not even out looking at that beautiful lake of yours.
Well, I've been outside, but, um, occasionally look up and, but. Not, not, uh, not to got anything to report.
Oh, it's great to see you here. Okay, Mark K.
Uh, nothing to report.
Rose Marie.
Well, we had that bright moon and then that virus caught me and now we got clouds, so. The only thing I've been observing was some moss when we had the, had the nice warm weather, so a whole lot of nothing astronomy wise.
Oh, okay. Malcolm.
Um, I've been, uh, observing minor planets with the remote scope. And submitting observations to the Minor Planet Center and hoping to hear back within a couple of weeks. That I have been assigned an observatory code, so I can. Begin searching and submitting for new objects and, um, told that takes a couple of weeks, so. Right now, I've, I've, I've successfully taken all my observations and, and submitted them. Now I'm just waiting.
Awesome. Okay, Bruce, you're unmuted.
Okay, yeah, I got unmuted now. Uh, yeah, so, um. I've been, um. In, uh. So, I, a while ago, a couple, many years ago, I actually heard a talk from Terrence Dickinson. And he showed some, uh, pictures, uh, which he had taken here in Kingston. At the, uh, from the Timescat statue looking out. And, uh, so in the last week or so, I actually got interested in going out and having a look and see what I could do. And, uh. So, um. I'm, I have something I could show you here. Um, yeah, so just. See if I can get this to run. Now, are you seeing anything yet?
Uh, just your desktop. Program. The presentation one.
Very much zoomed up big.
Okay.
We're on picture number two, but it's only a small picture.
Yeah, okay, let's see if I can get it bigger. There, is that bigger?
There we go, that's bigger.
Now, why am I got? Okay, now let me see if I can get this. Now, can you see that?
Yep. Whoa. Well, we did.
Okay, there's something there now, is that better?
Yeah, we can see it, we can see it.
No, okay, get this out of the way. Okay, so, um, yeah, so this I took was for, on the full moon night, uh, last, uh, just, uh. Well, a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, so I got, had to look around the statue and see what was, um, best angle. Um, so, um. I'm still working on it. I think it, it, the timing is very important. And, um, um, you have to sort of get in the right position so you don't see a lot of lights from the town. Um, now, there is, I have another picture. I don't know if I can show it. Right. So now. Can you see this?
Yep.
Okay, we'll go big screen again here. All right, so these are, uh, some pictures, uh, it's, um. Pictures of a, uh, conjunction. Of, uh, Venus and Jupiter, which I took and I'm, I, you know, cause the weather hasn't been so good and so on, I thought, well, I'm still playing around with this, so I'll. I look back and this is taken about, uh, three years ago, I guess. From someone's site and I just wanted to, so I, um, in this case, you can actually see. The, uh, Venus and Jupiter and, um. It's, uh, again, you're sort of playing around with the, um, with the light and trying to get the best, uh, um. In this case, bringing out the planets at the same time, not having too much background. There was a certain amount of, uh, glow in the background here, so this is. And just to try to bring it out a little bit, I, I've made the, um, uh, contrast a little. Um, you know, maybe a little over exaggerated, but. Anyway, I just wanted to share those, that was some ideas I've had and I think I might try and. And go out, I guess I'm, the question I have is, if any, does anyone have any suggestion on how one can? Try to sort of improve these, this kind of imaging. Um, with the, uh, you know, getting a, a good contrast to see. Whatever, uh. Uh, star or planet activities going on, same time not to, um, oversaturate.
You can shoot high dynamic range bracket shots with like six or seven different exposures. And then blend them all in Photoshop. That's one solution.
High dynamic, what does high dynamic range mean again?
It, it just is a term that refers to taking long exposures and short exposures. And combining the best elements of what's been exposed in each frame.
Okay. Okay, yeah, well, actually I do have quite a number of pictures of these. I could even go back and play around with that a little bit.
The key, the key is to use a tripod and ensure that you have the exact same framing, that nothing moves. When you're, when you've taken these different exposures and if, if everything is unchanged in alignment, then you can. Blend them together and come up with a, a smooth, uh, well-exposed image. That reflects just the good parts that are well-exposed in each image.
I appreciate that, Malcolm. Uh, I, um, thank you. I, and I actually do have, I've got probably got. Um, maybe almost a hundred pictures of these things and I tried to pull out the best three to show you tonight, but, but I can maybe go back and play around with that.
Yeah, look up HDR processing.
Will do. Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks, Malcolm. Thanks, Bruce. Okay, is that everybody that's online? Okay, we lost somebody. Okay, so let's carry on with the, in the room. Rick.
Here's the microphone, I'm gonna turn the lights on. Nope, turn the lights off. Open my pictures. So I mentioned that I've been doing, uh. Some open clusters, so start up the top one, there we go. And, um. So I thought I'd just show four that I've, uh, shot recently. And, uh, starting with NGC thirteen forty-two. Um. Quite a nice cluster, it's kind of spread out there on the just left of center. Um, the clusters are, um, given Trumpler. Uh, classifications, Robert Julius Trumpler. Uh, from back in the middle of the last century, did a lot of, uh, analysis of clusters and stuff. And, uh, so he, um, developed a rating system, so there's a Roman numeral. From one to four for clusters with sort of a tight central constant, uh, concentration, so. Looking almost more like a globular cluster kind of arrangement. Out to a four where the cluster is, uh, so diffuse and flat that it's even getting lost. In the, uh, surrounding stars. And then the next number is, um, from one to three for, um. Uh, one is where all the stars in the cluster are of roughly the same brightness. And three is where there's a quite dramatic range in brightness in the cluster members. And then finally, there's, um, a letter grade P. Uh, PM or R for poor, medium, and rich. Depending on whether they have less than fifty stars, fifty to a hundred stars, or more than a hundred stars. So this one, uh, thirteen forty-two was discovered by William Herschel. It's in Perseus at magnitude six point seven, so easy in binoculars, it's about fourteen arc minutes in diameter. And it's listed as a three, three P, so low central concentration, you can see the stars are kind of just spread uniformly. Over the area, uh, three, four, a high range in brightness, there's bright ones and faint ones. And it's a poor cluster with just, uh, fifty stars. And, uh, or the other thing they add on some of the Trumpler. Classifications is an N if there's nebulosity involved. And you can see there's definitely, uh, some dark nebulosity, uh, involved here. Um, that doesn't get mentioned in the Trumpler classification for this one because of course it was done. From the old Palomar sky plates and stuff like that where this, this kind of nebulosity wouldn't show up.
Rick, can you share your screen?
Uh, do we not have it shared?
No, we have, it's still up.
Is it there?
Uh, sorry about that. I'll, uh, take mine down. I thought I'd taken mine down, but.
So have you been changing, uh, images? Cause I think we've only seen the one.
Yeah, that's just the first one so far.
Yeah, uh, no, it's up there, I've seen it.
Yeah, my stuff's not there anymore, right?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so next slide, please. So the next one is NGC eighteen ninety-three. Uh, this one's listed as a two, two MN. Uh, so moderate concentration, uh, you can see the con, the cluster is kind of in the center. And I guess with some imagination, you can sort of see that it's, uh, a little more clustered towards the center. Um, moderate range in brightness and moderately rich with fifty to a hundred stars. Eighteen ninety-three, if you remember the frying pan asterism in the sort of south central Origa. This is where the flaming star nebula is, this is just to the left of that. And, uh, small cluster with, uh, involved nebulosity, uh, the nebulosity is called IC four ten. And then from the center of the field of view, about sixty percent of the way to the top edge. There's a kind of a C-shaped, backward C-shaped group of stars, that's actually Dolid's, uh, eighteen. Uh, another open cluster, kind of dubious in my mind. And then the whole thing is on the eastern edge of Melipomene. Uh, thirty-one, which is like two and a half degrees across or something. A lot of the Mel, Mel clusters are, uh, I don't know, I find really dubious. Uh, this is a very young one, only four point something year, million years old. Uh, hence all the, the dust and gas around it and somebody did a study with Chandra X-ray observations. And they've determined that there are forty-six hundred young stellar objects embedded in the, uh, the gas and dust there. So that's a huge cluster. Uh, next, please.
So one could imagine that being a web target at one point in the future then.
Yes, yes. This is a, uh, very small, seven oh six three, um, ten million year old cluster. Um. Eight minutes in diameter, it's in eastern Cepius. Not very exciting. And the last one. Is NGC seventy-two oh nine. This one's, uh, quite a nice cluster, but it does, uh, very much tend to. Is NGC seventy-two oh nine, this one's uh quite a nice cluster, but it does uh very much tend to. Blend into the background. Um. Four hundred million years old, discovered by William Herschel, uh magnitude seven point seven and twenty-five arc minutes across. At some point, I would like to give a talk on how we measure the diameter of these things, how we determine their age. And so forth, and what, which stars are members and which stars aren't, so that's uh what I have for last month.
You will? Jeanette. What have you been observing?
Um, Rick and I went down to the dock uh and uh viewed the uh space station. Do a fly pass, and it was um quite lovely. That's all.
Awesome, okay. Next we have Andrew.
It'll, it'll come as a shock to you that I'm focused on the moon at the moment, uh with an observing program, so. It takes up a lot of my time, but when I'm not doing that, uh like I said, what I do on the other nights. Is I've been following the double star program, slowly but surely, I, I'm always fascinated by double stars and, and multiple star groups, especially when they're differentiating colors, which I. I just find is visually pleasing to look at, so uh in between the lunar observations, I usually sort of chase those down when I get the chance.
When you're doing the double star, because I've, I've started it. And um, they make reference to the Pocket Sky Atlas.
Yes, they do, yeah.
Well, it's not very good.
No, and I, I would agree, there's actually been a couple, like I've been going through the catalog and there was a couple of stars I was looking through, I think in the Cassiopeia. A couple of nights ago and I couldn't find one of the ones that were listed even, I had gone through multiple different references and stellarium. And a bunch of things, even just trying to identify the star and, and I find their catalog system. That they're using to identify the stars in that list are, I don't know, I'm, I'm a bit confused by it, I have to admit. Because they're using multiple different cataloging systems, you know, and on top of that, some of them I think are, I think there's some typos perhaps, or it's. I don't know, maybe it's just not a finished, uh maybe they need to look, do a little bit of revision on that program.
And I find that because the particular double might be classified as a. Different, called a different star, depending on what's cataloged in.
Yeah.
You'd nece, don't necessarily have those numbers on whatever star chart you're looking at.
That's correct, and, and I find that some of the apps, um like sometimes it'll be like an HR reference, but it's a very. You know, they're very like, some of the cataloging uh systems they're using, I find are obscure and a lot of the apps. It's like Messier and stuff like that, but you may not find uh some of those catalog numbers even with extensive searching. So like, so that I find is the challenge for me at the moment, it's just to, it's just to sort of consolidate the list with what the references that I have, so work in progress.
Yeah, yeah, it's tough, it's tough, okay. Sure.
I have uh been doing a little bit of sun observing. And uh last Wednesday, I was able to take a couple of photographs. And then. Weather happened and I haven't done anything since, so. And that was my, last Wednesday was my first attempt at, to take pictures. So I, it, it, they turned out pretty good. Because each shot was a one shot, I didn't do anything to it and they looked pretty good on there, I showed it on our social. So um, I think now I'll continue and try and take some more pictures, but. I just need something to take a picture of now.
Yeah. Very tough taking pictures of the sun today, that's for sure. Introduce yourself.
Hi, uh, my name is Bruce Murray, I'm originally from the, the Hamilton Center. Uh, moved to the area in July, uh and so just a recent Kingston member. Uh, what I've been working on for the last, oh, thank you. Uh, I, I mainly do astrophotography, I've been working on two targets, Codwell Phi, which is called the Hidden Galaxy. And uh the double cluster, so when we have that thick smoke come by, I go for the cluster when it's a clear sky. I try to get some more time on the, on C five.
Excellent, thank you, welcome to the center.
Thank you.
Rick, Roger.
Thanks Bruce. Um, so I, after the excitement with the Starlink train. Um, at Fallen Stars, which was just spectacular, both, both of them. Uh, there was another launch a few days after that and, and it was clear, so um. I made sure that my wife and my son went out to watch the, the, the next one go overhead. And they were suitably impressed with uh, with the thing and um. And, and we can decry these things all we like and we do. Um, but there's, there's no doubt these are spectacular sights when uh, the day after, after launch. Um, the other thing that uh, that I ran into, I was hoping to take advantage of the uh, of the weather that we had last week. Um, and then found out that uh, uh the electric focuser that uh, that I had, this nice little thing from ZWO. Um, all of a sudden, literally stopped working from one night to the next and um. And I tried ripping all sorts of things apart, trying all sorts of things to go ahead and do it, I wrote something. To the, the, the chat list here and didn't get a single reply for anybody can help, I opened up an incident with ZWO. They can't help me either, but I found a bypass. Um, and of course, this explains the current clouds that were on there. So, so anyway, so I'm hoping that tomorrow night, I may actually get a chance to uh, to start using the uh. Uh, the telescope again and um, and start hunting for asteroids. And eventually, I also want to, there's a, there's a couple I really desperately want to see, but I also want the observatory number, much as Malcolm is doing. Anyway, that's what I've been up to.
Great, I want to pass it on over to.
Uh, so my wife's been still busy taking pictures, I don't know how she seems to find. Clear skies at night, but she's, if you uh go on the Facebook page for the Kingston Rask, you'll see she's posting. Images up there on a fairly regular basis, uh for myself. Um, last time I talked about my LX two hundred and I. Got a little chance to play with it, so I actually had it plate solving and imaging and I've started processing a picture. It's not gonna be great quality because I need to collimate, but uh, at least it's moving forward and getting closer to being where I need it to be. Um, I ordered a double stack for my solar scope and that came yesterday, so now. Waiting for clear skies again, so I can try that out and uh decided that uh. We, we only have one good computer for processing and uh, we're both starting to get. More need of it, so I've ordered the parts and this weekend I should be getting parts to build another computer, so. Both of us can start doing some processing, so that's where we're at.
Excellent, okay.
Sweet, uh.
Uh, okay, not too much, I guess the um. The last time we were out was the fallen stars, I guess we, we had a, a, a good look at some uh solar activity. Sunspots and had a look at a globular cluster, which my wife informs me was M thirteen. Uh, and then had a look at a couple of the large, larger planets that were available. That's about it. Oh, actually, we have terrible viewing in our backyard, but I go out on occasion at night, have look up and I actually saw. Something shoot across a meteor, so, but that's what it.
All right.
So yeah, mostly uh, it was just uh fallen stars, so um. First night I didn't manage to see the great red spot on Jupiter, uh it was a very nice presentation. And um, I did thirty Messier objects. We saw the Starlink train and of course the um, the two of them and of course the. Space station going overhead, a couple meteorites and I did some uh. You know, just looked at some sunspots in the daytime, so it was a, it was a good time.
One. Okay.
Hi there.
Wife's had a good run of clear nights since Fallen Stars. And um, I did uh, I think I did twelve new galaxies and um. Some shots of Venus, Jupiter and Saturn, that's kept me going.
Okay, excellent. Mike.
Yeah, I managed uh to get out, uh when it was closer to a full moon with, I took my grandkids, we were, we're always babysitting grandkids, but uh. We uh, we basically, the uh two oldest ones, we went out and looked at the moon. And looked at Jupiter and Saturn and the nine-year-old, he's able to. You know, turn him loose and he takes it outside and he can point it at the objects himself, so uh, he's uh, he's quite enthusiastic about it. Uh, then uh, I went out and did some imaging, uh just did the Helix Nebula the other night before moonrise. And uh, then spent the rest of the night trying to drift align my uh. Mount, trying to get it right on, because it hasn't been quite right, so. Uh, I think I hit my head on it there and knocked it out, so it's uh, it's back to where it should be and I'm hoping the next few clear nights, I'll be able to uh. See how that worked out, that's been about it.
Hey Mark.
Uh, not too much for me in the last month, I spent a couple of weeks on holidays. Uh, but I have cleared off the back deck for all the summer stuff a couple of days ago. So hoping to get my scope out there, which is really handy for me and working remotely inside the house, so. Hopefully better nights ahead.
Hi Bruce, okay. Kevin.
My life, yes.
You have something to show?
I do, let's see if we can show it from here. So, this is a picture of one of our all-sky cameras in the backyard that does fireball detection. And you may notice these uh two large objects here that normally are full of leaves and totally block off that section of the eastern sky.
Nothing yet.
I'm not checking properly, okay, thank you. Um, let's try that again, how about that?
Uh, there you go.
There we go, so this is dead ash trees, green ash trees to be specific. Hanging right over the house and of course, they've been dead now for a while and then you start worrying about things falling on you. So just a few weeks ago, a week ago, they got taken away. Now unfortunately, we don't have an observatory at our house, this is just the old sky camera that's sitting on the garage. But you can sure see all the way to Montreal now when there's a fireball that goes by. I'll just flip back and forth a little bit, look at, look at the difference there, just tremendous. Yeah. So, for astronomy's sake, I know we all hate trees. If you have trees in your way or think they're gonna get in your way, here's some advice, cut them down now. Don't let them grow for thirty years and get bigger and require such an operation to take down. That you cannot afford to build an observatory. Um, sending men up in these things to take them down is not cheap, we were just shocked at how much that was. No, they would fell on our house, so that's the downside of it. Uh, okay, and do I have one more here? Not, I forgot to bring that along, okay, that's everything.
Okay. Alrighty, does anybody have anything from the uh? On the floor that, or from Zoom land that they wanna bring up or talk about? Did I report? Well, no, I did not. Okay, I, I, I've been out doing solar, uh last few days have only been visual and doing a sunspot count. Because it's been too windy and too cloudy and me dodging clouds for images. Uh, but last week, when it was nice and clear, I actually took the eight-inch dob out to the backyard. And uh. Tried to find a spot where we could put it and possibly put a small observatory there, but uh. Hence the question that I put online about the uh. Uh, the, the motorcycle cover. So you could sort of leave your telescope out there, put the cover over it and then take it off and be able to observe, so I don't want anything with walls. This, where a regular shelter would give you walls, right? Um, so, next thing I'll. Be doing is trying to figure out what kind of uh small. Uh. Portable stand we can put over the telescope when it's out there, because we actually have the telescope up on a. Stand, so that I'm not bending over as far and hurting your back. And you can stand up and it's easier to look through the telescope with the stand. You still got walls. I don't want a wall. Well, yeah, but then you gotta worry about the wind, right? So if you're gonna be leaving your telescope out there in the field. Then you gotta worry about wind. So that, that, that's the uh thinking over the winter months, what's gonna happen, because yes, I had the telescope out there, there was a lot more sky. It was nice to see the western uh sky and that's where I was looking at uh T Corbor and trying to find it and uh. I had a good old time when I was out there, so that'll, that's what we'll be doing through the winter months. But other than that, that's uh all I've been doing and submitting my results to the AVSO and to the BAA, so. That's it, does anybody else have anything that they'd like to bring up? No? Well, if not, we will call this meeting done, just remember our next meeting is November eighth. It's our annual meeting and uh elections, so um, please make sure you come and uh. Think about running for one of those positions that are open and till then. Clear skies for Saturday. Keep the scope pointing up, yes.